Just tell me when to go ahead. All right, good evening. Welcome everyone to the first candidate forum for the general election 2020. I'm Linda Heine, I'm the Voter Service Chair with the New Ulm League of Women Voters. Before we get started, before I introduce the moderator for our first forum, I wanted to talk about just a couple of other things that the League of Women Voters are doing that are very important this year in particular. Our name, of course, the League of Women Voters, voter being the most important. Part of that name, we are all about voting and it is very important to the League of Women Voters, nationally, statewide, and locally, that voting integrity be preserved and that as many eligible voters be, have access to voting as possible. We also place a great deal of importance and emphasis on education so that voters have, are going to the polls from an educated standpoint, and that's why, of course, we have the forum here this evening because we've got our candidates here to tell you about their positions. Our national and state organizations have two programs going that you can access. First, from the education standpoint, you can go to vote411.org. That is a location that will give you easy access to information about how to register, how to absentee vote, if you choose. But also, there will be information about candidates in state, local, and national elections. Our candidates will be given surveys and have the opportunity to provide information about their positions. The other program that's going on is a campaign that we're calling Vote From Home. It's an easy access information from our website. It contains information on how you can, all the steps you need to take in order to use the mail-in or absentee voting option if you choose. And it contains a lot of information to help you understand that that is a secure and safe way to cast your ballot this year. The League of Women Voters, as if you've been to our events before, you know we are nonpartisan. And as I said, voting, secure, safe, and effective voting is important to us. So if the League of Women Voters felt that a particular voting practice was not safe and secure, we would not support it. More importantly, we would probably get out and do some research and try to make changes so that the process would be safe and secure. So if you have questions about voting from home, please go, type into your browser or search engine, Vote From Home. It's a button that you will find on the League of Women Voters Minnesota website and it will take you right to some very easy information to quickly go through and understand the voting process and a little bit of the research behind the process that the state of Minnesota has adopted. With that, we're gonna, I'm gonna introduce to you Diane Norland. Diane is from the St. Peter League of Women Voters and she is moderating our candidate forums tonight.
Can we take a brief break? I just want to restart the live stream.
Okay.
So I should wait for a second?
I guess, yeah.
Okay. Technical difficulties.
We'll adapt.
Good evening and welcome. My name is Diane Norland. I'm from North Mankato. And yes, I sit on city council there. So this should be a piece of cake, right? I'm your moderator this evening, trained by the League of Women Voters. I've been a moderator since 2001. This is, this forum tonight is for New Ulm Councillor-at-Large, City Council. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have created a somewhat different forum. Limited numbers allowed in the rooms, masks when possible, and physical distancing. We're also using technology for more communications options. Our candidates tonight will answer questions presented from the audience members and from the League of Women Voters using a nonpartisan, unbiased, and impartial format established by LWV of Minnesota. Our purpose is to create an opportunity for the public to hear the candidates discuss issues of importance in this election. Our audience tonight includes people viewing or listening to our live broadcast on KNUJ Radio and New Ulm Community Access Television and YouTube. And thank you to those sources for their help tonight. The, we, so, New Ulm Cable Access and KNUJ, we ask that you send your questions to this email address, or that you call one of these numbers, phone numbers, The League of Women Voters does screen the questions we receive and use. We may rephrase, combine, or eliminate questions to avoid duplication. Questions will not be asked if they are of a personal nature and not relevant to the office or if they are designed only to make a statement rather than to solicit information. Our intention in screening questions is to select questions that represent the interests of the persons who submit those questions. Please contact the candidates directly after the forum for any questions that have not been presented or if you feel that an issue has not been adequately addressed. The two candidates running tonight for New Ulm Councillor-at-Large are Andrea Betker and Larry Mack. We look forward to a respectful learning experience. The candidates are expected to honor the time limits. Upon completion of the introductions, and we will start with Andrea, each candidate will be given two minutes to respond to questions which I will read. I will alternate the order of response, so each candidate will answer first on alternate questions. The candidates each have an opportunity to offer a one-minute rebuttal to two questions if they choose. Candidates will be allowed one minute for a closing statement. And due to coin toss, good luck. We will begin with Andrea.
Thank you. And thank you to the League for putting on this informative and very necessary event. My name is Andrea Betker and I am running for your City Councillor-at-Large. Throughout my time in New Ulm, I have been very active in the community as a volunteer, business manager, and business owner. I currently serve as the Executive Director at New Ulm Turner Hall and I am President and Co-Founder of the Women's Forum, both 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations. My community involvement includes serving as a board member for the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce where I was past Chair for the Chamber Welcoming Committee. I also served as Board Chair for the Grand Center for Arts and Culture and have been a volunteer at Oktoberfest, Bach Fest, Bavarian Blast, and for the ISD 88 Eagles Extravaganza fundraiser. My husband Jeff and I have two children who attend New Ulm Public Schools as a second and a seventh grader. I care about this community and I know what an incredible opportunity is in front of us and this is why I'm running for your City Councillor-at-Large. Thank you.
Thank you Andrea. Larry?
I'm Larry Mack, New Ulms Ward 4 Councillor. I'm running for Councillor-at-Large. I've served on the City Council for the past six years. I am the current Chair of the Planning Commission and Vice Chair of the Renew Committee. I'm a sixth-generation New Ulm native and have worked as a tool and die maker at 3M here in New Ulm for the past 21 years. Experience comes from doing. You have to earn it. During my six years on the City Council, I've been hands-on in decision-making that resulted in retaining and expanding local businesses. Bringing economic development in-house and purchasing land keeps the National Guard in New Ulm. Over the past year alone, the councillors and I have helped German Park with another step of its Master Park Plan. Started preliminary work on renewed projects. Kept rent affordable at the senior center to allow Lutheran Social Services to continue to provide meals on wheels to the community. And helped local businesses adapt to the changing COVID situation. To make these decisions, I listened carefully and respectfully to the people on all sides of the issues. I built relationships. I stayed open-minded and flexible. I did my due diligence by reviewing staff reports and public comments. I asked questions and worked as part of a team to find resourceful, yet responsible solutions. As your Councillor-at-Large, I would continue to grow these skills and use my experience to lead the City Council to decisions that put our community first. My priorities be retaining and adding businesses and revitalizing downtown and growing the tax base.
Thank you Larry. And I am waiting for my first question.
Did you have the, could I have answered the questions that they were given?
I, I don't have those two.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
We do, we do have them.
You do have questions already that were given to you. Okay, okay. Well, in that case, we will start with Larry and would you please read the question, Larry?
Well, what question would you like? We had two of them.
Okay, and I don't have either one.
I'm sorry. This is my fault.
Well, that's all right.
Well, I can.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, my fault. I didn't pull out the other sheet, did I Linda? Sorry, sorry. I apologize. Okay. All right, Larry, your first question. Do you have any personal weaknesses or challenges which affect your ability to serve as City Council President? If so, what would you do to counteract those weaknesses and meet those challenges?
Well, like many people, I find public speaking challenging. It can be difficult for me to speak in front of large groups of people. I sometimes can't find the right word or I mispronounce a name. When you're faced with a challenge, you can go one of two ways. You can avoid it or you can face it head-on and try to beat it. That's what I did. I tried to get more comfortable speaking to groups of people. I purposely put myself in positions where I was forced to talk to people of all kinds and practice my skills. I became involved with a variety of local commissions and committees such as Historical Preservation Commission, Friends of the Sister City Commission, Planning Commission, and Renew Committee. I served as a board member of the Lindhaus and Turner Hall. I even volunteered to work at local festivals as a way to gain experience and confidence talking to people. Then I ran for City Council for the first time in 2014 to push myself further. You can't shy away from public speaking if you're on the council. Your job is to speak up, represent your ward, and be an active member of the community. Facing my challenge head-on was one of the best decisions I ever made. After all these years, public speaking becomes easier, but I am always working to perfect it. I continue to practice by putting myself out there and trying new things and starting conversations.
Thank you Larry. Andrea?
Thank you. I have been working consistently for the past couple of years to understand all that is involved in representing the citizens of New Ulm as City Council President. I've spoken with other councillors to learn more about the role and to get an additional perspective. One of the things that I don't have is the experience of being on the council, but that is an experience that I would like to gain. I understand there may be times in which I need to make personal sacrifices to be present and I've had these discussions with my family and am prepared to serve as council president and have their full support. One of the most important lessons I have learned throughout my career is the ability to pause and self-reflect. It gives me the ability to assess my current situation and make necessary adjustments. Taking the time to identify gaps is the first step towards closing them. While it is always uncomfortable to talk about a weakness, it is far more rewarding to make progress in improving one. As council president, I will work to address any weaknesses and will be receptive to constructive feedback from others.
Thank you Andrea. The second question that you received. What steps are needed that you feel the City Council can take to improve the vibrancy of our downtown? And we will start with you Andrea.
Thank you. And I know that this is a question that's on the minds of a lot of citizens. The first step is to ensure that the councillors are listening and participating where they can in the dialogues between local economic development groups. We have several economic development groups working independently and bringing these groups together will be a good start. The surveys have been done. The consultants have been here. We have the information we need. The New Ulm Partnership is a good start and now it's time to get to work. We know what types of businesses our communities craving. Creating a downtown that will attract residents is what needs to come first. This is what the surveys of our own citizens tell us and what other communities have found success with. Some of our residents aren't even fully aware of all the businesses that we have downtown, what resources we have, what types of retail. And that is something that we need to do a better job educating our community on. Some also feel that the downtown development will cater to the tourists instead of the residents. And I think that we should put our community first and the tourism will come. The City Council does not have the sole responsibility for economic development and downtown revitalization, but it can help by voting for reasonable measures that are presented to the council to encourage downtown revitalization. So that's measures to retain, to attract new businesses, to support the businesses that we have here and letting them know where those resources are, whether that's through the city, whether that's through the chamber, or through the SBDC, Small Business Development Corporation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Larry, should I repeat the question or no?
I got it.
You got it, yeah.
All right. I think we need to have a revitalization plan, which we can feed off the current Garland Committee, I believe, because of the known building parapets that are crumbling. We currently have examples of structurally unsafe buildings on both ends of downtown. While I'm not proud of that, the Garland Committee is exploring options for future holiday decorations. I think the city needs to help find a consultant and craftsman who can do the necessary parafit repairs. Need to continually well-maintain buildings for safe, attractive downtown. We have loan opportunities that the EDA can help with, with our Assistant City Manager. Property owners can pursue them. If we continue to encourage property owners to invest in maintaining their buildings, businesses will follow. If we get the Garland Poles in place, that's been one of the options, and make the area large enough, we can create traffic calming on Minnesota Street for safety. We can also create outdoor accessible spaces like parklets for outdoor dining options. I'd like the council to be more involved with the chamber and partner with them to achieve these goals. I'd like to continue to explore new ways to bring entrepreneurs to the downtown. Also, to continue to bring the MakerFest to the downtown community several times a year. Had asked the chamber and the EDA to work with entrepreneurs to experiment with pop-up shops also. To fund our ongoing downtown revitalization projects, I'd like to pursue the citywide food and beverage tax. Surrounding communities currently have this tax. Mankato, for example, has used this tax to fund their Civic Center and Riverside Amphitheater. This tax would need voter approval before moving forward. Another funding option would be EDA funds. Continue to look in at housing options in small grocers near the downtown would be worth exploring also.
Thank you Larry. I've just received some instructions to talk, all three of us, sorry, more directly into the microphone. So we'll make a try, right? Okay. Your next question, and we will start with Larry. Your next question is, "A small business owner notes, 'In eight years of business downtown, we have never had an elected member of the City Council approach us to inquire about our business. How would you gather qualitative versus quantitative data on the needs of the business community to assure that your information is diverse and representative of the entire business community?'"
That's a lot of information. Can you repeat that for me here?
This business owner said that they had never been approached by an elected City Council person in eight years of business inquiring about their business. "How would you gather qualitative versus quantitative data on the needs of the business community to assure that your information is diverse and representative of the entire business community?"
I think first off, we could do a survey and deliver it if we have to, and or mail it to every business in the downtown community and ask them what are they looking for? And how do they want to expand their business? How do they want to maintain their business? What would they ask of the council in aid that we could help them with? And I feel we've got resources in place. And we've got an EDA, we've got our chamber. I would encourage that business owner, he or she, to get involved with their chamber and network within our community. And I'll be honest, I haven't been to every business in the downtown. And, you know, some of the shops, you know, you know, don't pertain to me, I, you know. But I do make a valid effort to try to get into a lot of the businesses within our downtown community. And I think, you know, as a whole, as a council, we'll do what we can to help these business owners.
Thank you Larry. Andrea?
Thank you.
Shall I read it?
If you can, one more time, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Yep, no problem at all. A small business owner. "Eight years of business downtown, we have never had an elected official member of the City Council approach us to inquire about our business. How would you gather qualitative versus quantitative data on the needs of the business community to assure that your information is diverse and representative of the entire business community?"
Thank you. First of all, I think it's great that we've had the business owner with us downtown for eight years, so that's wonderful. First, I would want to actually talk with this individual about what challenges they are having and just to answer that simple question that we can ask of all business owners, which is, how can we help? You know, our businesses in town aren't limited just to what's downtown. We have a huge variety of different types of businesses. Local retail, manufacturing, nonprofits. You know, and to really identify the needs, yeah, maybe we do need councillors and city officials to hit the ground and just take a little bit of a deeper dive with some of these business owners. And that would help us, you know, determine that qualitative, qualitative and quantitative data by just hearing those voices and hearing what is on the minds of the business owners.
Thank you Andrea. The next question is, and we will start with Andrea. "The City Council has focused heavily on the renew, R-E-N-U, on the renew project since 2016 when the local sales tax was extended. Do you agree that this focus on renew projects is more heavily weighted towards tourism than towards providing services for residents? Do you believe the council needs to work to improve development of services to residents as a priority over development of tourism? If so, what are your plans to do this?"
You know, I was active with working to get the renew initiative passed in 2016. And I think that it is very important for our community. There was a very extensive process for businesses to submit the types of projects that they would like to see happen. And there was a panel of people that went through those projects and evaluated them independent to the council and helped to make some of those decisions. And I do believe that they did pick a lot of projects that were important for our community itself and would also work to improve the tourism. Is the council spending too much time on this? You know, I don't think so. Until these, until these projects are complete and they're done, we need to keep moving them forward. Obviously, you know, we are a community that is a bit tourist-centric and that is something that we do need to consider, but also really starting to listen to the residents of what they're saying in these surveys and that they have needs that they feel are not getting met. And, you know, certainly as new renew projects come along and we have an opportunity to look to get some of these funds in another 10 years, you know, that is something that we really... you know, that is something that we really, really need to look into is how it's going to really help our community individuals and maybe not as much the tourism. You know, I feel like a lot of that has been addressed with these projects already.
Thank you, Andrea. Larry, would you like me to repeat it?
Sure.
Okay. "The city council has focused heavily on the renew project since 2016, when the local sales tax was extended. "Do you agree that this focus on renew projects is more heavily weighted towards tourism "than towards providing services for residents? "Do you believe that the council needs to work to improve development of services to residents "as a priority over development of tourism? "If so, what are your plans to do this?"
Well, first off, I served, when I first got elected in 2014, I served on the Renew Committee and I am the current Vice Chair of the Renew Committee. And we had over two dozen projects that were started, that were proposed. We narrowed it down to a half dozen projects and proceeded forward. I'm going to tell you right now, the community, they wanted something to do in the community. The number one project, they wanted a water park. They wanted to make a destination. They wanted to stay in New Ulm. They didn't want to have to be driving to Mankato, to Springfield, Gaylord. They wanted to stay right here in their hometown. They wanted something for their kids and their family to do together as a family. But, you know, we also have projects of regional interests, you know, like Herman Heights. And it was a safety mechanism. It's a regional tourist spot. So, we have a little of each. But I think mostly, you know, we did a revitalization of our baseball field and New Ulm is baseball strong. And they supported heavily and the fields they felt were worthy of doing a tune-up after over 50 years. So, you know, I think we've done both. But I think we prioritized on focusing on our local residents first here. And they want to, you know, fitness has become more of the future. And, you know, by making a fitness center that's 24/7 accessible, making it a family destination. So, the mother can be working in the fitness center, their daughter could be in gymnastics and somebody could be swimming. So, I think we did a well, a good job with the fit for our community.
Thank you, Larry. And this question, you will start. "With one of you becoming the new city council president, "what plans do you have to work towards a new cohesive council, working for the benefit of the city?"
I think first of all, if I was elected as city council president, I think, I'd like to hear from the wards first. I don't think the president should be putting his opinion out first. And I also think that as the president, that we need to take the community input and not shut it out from the community. And those are words that I've heard from people in the community as to why we wanted to change with the current situation. And, you know, I want to be open-minded and try to be solution-minded. And I think we try to find the balance of the four wards and implement action.
Thank you, Larry. Andrea, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please, thank you.
"With one of you becoming the new city council president, "what plans do you have to work toward a new cohesive council, working for the benefit of the city?"
Thank you. And I think that that's a great question, especially with some of the changes that could be occurring with the new council. But the big thing is, you know, we are going to have differences of opinion. And working together as a cohesive unit, you know, we have to talk with the citizens and with the business owners and find out what their biggest needs are and look at ways that we can tackle what those are. A couple of the questions tonight were related to tourism and the fact that business owners, you know, don't feel like they've been recognized or listened to. And that, to me, says that there's areas that we can do a better job with that. And, you know, maybe it is a matter of sending each counselor out into the wards. Maybe it is a matter of having a forum where, you know, they can have people come and talk to them about their issues. You know, you have to give the folks the opportunity to do that. And you'd be very surprised of what people are willing to tell you if you just ask. So, I think that the council would have a responsibility to get out there. Obviously, the community is saying that there is a need for us to do that. And I think that that would be a good start in identifying where we have some opportunities to move forward and just really bring this community more together.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
The next question, Andrea, you will begin. And there is a title here, "Welcome Community." Okay, but the question is, "Do you feel the New Ulm community could be more welcoming to people who are different "than the majority population, such as persons of color? "What would you do to initiate changes that could make New Ulm a more welcoming community "for new residents or visitors who differ from the majority of our existing population?"
The fact that this question came up tells me that we already have an opportunity to make our people feel more welcome. I know The Grand recently has hosted some Welcome to Town events. I know that the Chamber has hosted the Welcome to the Party event. Right now, it is actually scheduled for next week, but obviously with COVID, some of those events are on pause. You know, so there are things that our community is doing to welcome people to the community. But I think that there's some things that we can be doing better. And I think that our community is starting to change. And I think that that makes some people in our community uncomfortable. And maybe uncomfortable just because it is a change, you know, that is different. But, you know, it's time that we start working together as a community and understanding and valuing, you know, what makes our community special. If you look at a community like Sleepy Eye, you know, they have really embraced their population and, you know, have done a lot of Spanish immersion and, you know, adding those types of things. And, you know, that may be something that needs to be considered here. But I would like to think that all people are welcome. I mean, I moved here 11 years ago from the East Coast. My husband is from here and I believe that that is part of what helped me acclimate to the community. And I thought that one of the best ways to learn about the community was to get involved. And so maybe sharing some ways with some of the new members of our community to get involved would be a good start.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
Larry, should I repeat the question?
Please.
Please, okay. "Do you feel the New Ulm community could be more welcoming to people who are different than the majority population, "such as persons of color? "What would you do to initiate changes that could make New Ulm "a more welcoming community for new residents or visitors "who differ from the majority of our existing population?"
Well, I'm going to just say it right now. I know that the Chamber has done pass Welcome to the Newcomers events. They've invited people. I think as an individual, when you move into a community, you have to be outgoing too. And you have to get to know your neighbors. And it's a two-way street. And, you know, if you don't take the action or initiative to go meet your neighbors or venture out of your shell and say, "Go to the local coffee shop, ask some questions," you know, and check out local dining options and things of that nature, you're going to feel isolated. And we have a lot of festivals within our community. We have a lot of theater or music productions within the community. And it's all about networking and you have to get out there. And I think New Ulm has done a very good job with opening up to people and balancing that in regards to the receptive to having people of all color in the community. If everybody's respectful of everybody else. And there's no difference in that. And it's all about networking.
Thank you, Larry. The next question, you are the first to answer. "Downtown New Ulm bars and restaurants, many of which play a vital role in the viability of our historic downtown, "are struggling with the challenges of COVID-19. "What have you done to understand the individual and unique challenges facing our bars and restaurants? "And do you have any plans to assist them?"
Well, I've been to several different restaurants and/or coffee shops and different shops in the downtown community. And yes, they're struggling. I've asked, what can we do? I'm a current council member. We've provided loans already through our EDA to multiple businesses. I've also asked them if they're struggling too far. Reach out, connect with us. They have to let us know. And we have an Assistant City Manager in charge of economic development, but they have to let us know. And if we don't know, we can't be problem-solving on it. But we're all in this together right now and we all have to follow the government's guidelines right now for the CDC. And we all have to use our best judgment. And everybody's stressed out, but we have to just keep going forward one day at a time and try to find new ways to adapt their businesses, whether it's going to be takeout or drive-through and follow the guidelines for their restaurants or bars at the current time. And everybody's going to have to do their part, social distancing. And we'll just try to keep moving forward here in these challenging times.
Thank you, Larry. Andrea, would you like me to read the question?
Yes, please, thank you.
And maybe next time I don't even ask that question, I just simply read it.
Thank you.
Okay. "Downtown New Ulm bars and restaurants, many of which play a vital role in the viability of our historic downtown, "are struggling with the challenges of COVID-19. "What have you done to understand the individual and unique challenges facing our bars and restaurants? "And do you have any plans to assist them?"
Thank you. As somebody that is responsible for the management of a restaurant in New Ulm, not quite downtown, but on the border, I understand the pain that these organizations are going through. And I know that they've been working to adapt. I've talked to several of the business owners and I continue to stay in contact with them, you know, just to find out what's working. And I know that they're hurting. The company that, you know, the restaurant that I run, it is hurting. And as business owners, you know, I know that I've had to make some very tough decisions when it comes to staffing, tough decisions when it comes to going against what the people want. But really, when the information is showing things aren't working. And, you know, the city did help out with a $2,500 grant early on when we were expecting this not to continue for month after month after month. They also came up with a $10,000 loan opportunity with a low interest rate, which I know many of the restaurants downtown took advantage of and was a help. You know, as this goes on, it is going to be important to adapt. You know, I'm finding that takeout seems to work. Working in maybe small private events seems to be working. But what's working for us may not work for other organizations. And so, you know, we all need to hang in there and do what we can to support these businesses and use the resources that we have available. Maybe it's, you know, larger meals to go, maybe it's different hours. But, you know, there are opportunities out there and it is working. And I, you know, when I go into these restaurants, I see people in there and that is reassuring to me, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Andrea, you will be first this time. "The city council recently addressed whether to hold a large baseball tournament, "which required consideration of the city's interest in potential economic benefits "versus the potential healthcare threat to the community." And there are actually two questions, one for Mr. Mack, one for Ms. Betker, Mrs. Betker. Mr. Mack, what factors contribute to your votes on this issue? Mrs. Betker, how would you have handled this issue if you had been on the council?
Do I go first?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What I would have done with this issue is I would have spoken very closely with the baseball group that was putting on this tournament. I was at the city council meeting where the state baseball board members came to speak about all of the preparedness plans that they were putting in place for the tournament. I was also here to hear about the phone calls and the opposition and the letters that the counselors were receiving as well as when the public health department representatives were here speaking against having the tournament. I likely would have also voted no on hosting the tournament, but I would have done it for a different reason. I wanted to really talk with the gentleman putting on the tournament to make sure that having a capacity of 250 people coming in and coming out quickly was going to be sensible for us. You know, my understanding is that the admissions were going to the state baseball league. So, I mean, their income was going to be fixed. I mean, they knew what they were able to expect to bring in. But it was a big variable for us. And, you know, I just wanted to make sure if we did progress with this, that it was going to be something that was good for the city and not just leave, you know, our baseball league in the lurch, you know, with bills and things that were unexpected because the attendance wasn't there. So, you know, I was leaning towards voting no for that reason. But had I been on the council, I would have spoken with them directly to learn a little bit more about that and the risk that they were taking in putting on the tournament as well.
Thank you, Andrea.
I'm sorry, can I add one more thing?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You know, I did hear about the preparedness plans that they did have in place, you know, and just looking and listening to some of the feedback and, you know, and it did appear that it was working. But again, you know, as a counselor, I would have weighed that information along with the conversations that I had with the baseball board to make that decision.
Thank you. Larry, "The city council recently addressed whether to hold a large baseball tournament, "which required consideration of the city's interest in potential economic benefits "versus the potential healthcare threat to the community. "What factors contributed to your vote on this issue?"
Well, first of all, I voted no for this issue when it came to the city council. What factors came to consideration was the outcry from the community at large and even baseball board members that called me and said, "Please do not hold this tournament within our community." And a couple of them voted for not having that tournament. And, you know, as a counselor, I had to look at that. And from our local hospital, a group of physicians got together to say that if we did have something in our community, that we don't have enough rooms within our community. And so when I had to wave that out, that when I got an outcry of people in the community that don't want to bring more people in. And as an individual, you can control yourself, but we can't control a whole crowd of people. We don't know where they've been either. But we're all in this together. And even though you can put all the guidelines out there and the recommendations, is it enough? Or is it overkill? How do you determine that 250 people is safe to have an event rather than having 200 people on that aspect? So, that's what contributed to me, you know, voting no for that baseball tournament.
Thank you, Larry. The next question, and Larry, we will start with you. The next question, excuse me. "Excluding the recent sales tax recreation bonding, "do you have a plan to reduce the annual cost of the city's long-term debt service?"
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yeah. "Excluding the recent sales tax recreation bonding, "do you have a plan to reduce the annual cost of the city's long-term debt service?"
I'm trying to figure out where they're trying to go with this question here, you know, on that aspect. It's kind of a, it's a... So, are they talking about the sales tax from our local option sales tax for our renew projects? That's where I'm kind of getting at here.
Well, it says excluding the recent... Well, it's, it says excluding the recent sales tax recreation bonding.
I'm not aware of that fund. That's where I'm kinda coming from here. You know, if I could have a little more information. Can we go back to that question and answer it, try a different question first? I'm not trying to avoid it, but, you know.
Or we could simply go with, do you have a plan, speaking from a council person's perspective, do you have a plan to reduce the annual cost of the city's long-term debt service? Could you go with that? Andrea, would that be? Would that be acceptable?
That would be fine.
Okay, just forget the sales tax. Yeah.
All right. And I'm sorry about that. But moving forward here, I guess, you know, for, we have to grow our tax base. And I think, you know, New Ulm's done a good job with that. You know, we've, uh, in the last six years, uh, we've had, we've gone from produce, uh, building six, eight houses a year to this year, right now, we're up to seventeen houses growing, being constructed at the current time growing, going on in our community. And if we can continue to do that, we can lower the tax base. But I also think that, you know, as a city council, we need to take a hard look at our housing that we own as a community, because we own Garden Terrace One and Two Apartments. And I think there's a huge opportunity that we should not be the largest landlord in our community. We built them as a, to create housing twenty-some plus years ago. But I think now they are talking about wanting to build a Garden Terrace Three, but we don't pay property taxes. And I think as a city, you know, I'd rather turn that over to a private developer where we could create property tax base and in a sense, reduce, uh, some property taxes within our community and spur more development and not suppress the rent market by being the largest landlord within our community.
Thank you. Andrea, shall I repeat the last, just the piece of it?
I think I, I think I have it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Sorry, this is a little complex.
Um, I will say in this sense that I agree with Larry that, um, the city should not be the largest landowner. And if there is opportunity to generate tax revenues from that, those definitely need to be explored. Um, internally, we can look at the city operating structure, uh, and the employment positions on ways that we can find opportunities and save money. Um, save money, more efficient operations. And then really looking, looking at that budget and seeing, you know, where we can save and where we can reallocate those dollars. Also, you know, as Larry said, growing the tax base. And that means in a different approach to economic development. You know, as I mentioned, we do have the information that we need to move forward. And we have some incredible economic development arms in New Ulm with the, the EDA, with the New Ulm EDC, with the Chamber, um, and with the city, you know, doing its part as well with the Assistant City Manager helping with that. And they, we really need to start getting those arms together if we wanna be serious about growing the tax base. I mean, I guarantee you that there's businesses that are interested in coming to New Ulm. Um, and it's great to see that some of the land out by the airport is, you know, looking to get prepared for that because I think people are ready. I think our community is ready for that. Um, and that would, you know, the economic development and just kinda looking at some internal opportunities are gonna be two good first steps for that.
All right. Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
The last question, uh, apparently, is, do you support succession? And we will start with, uh, Andrea. Do you support succession planning? The promotion of experienced and qualified individuals from within the city organization?
Absolutely. I think succession planning is important. I think if you have the right candidates, um, and they've made the commitment to the job and they're doing a good job, I see no problem. I think that most people want that opportunity to be able to work themselves up as they go through things. Um, however, you know, we know that roles of jobs do change and they need to be reevaluated and make sure that, you know, that's, that person that's planning to succeed them is the right person for the job. Uh, I also think that other candidates do need to be explored because they may bring a fresh perspective and new opportunities and ideas in front of us. Um, but, you know, it does make sense in most cases, in many cases, to really take a close look at the person that had been shadowing, um, somebody to do that job in the first place. It doesn't mean that that's a given. But, you know, I think that, that they should be looked at closely. Again, you know, it depends on what type of role we're looking at as well. You know, something like the, the city engineer, I mean, that's a big role to fill. And when you're spending tens of thousands of dollars sometimes to source those positions and to get the word out there, um, with headhunters and recruiters, you know, that's an expensive thing to do. Um, you wanna make sure that somebody is gonna be in that right position. I mean, I couldn't imagine having to, to know everything about the city and all the ins and outs. So, you know, if there is somebody that, um, is versed in that, you know, that they should be looked at. But again, to, to start planning, because we have had some, some rapid turnover in some positions.
Thank you. Larry, do you support succession planning? The promotion of experienced and qualified individuals from within the city organization?
I'm gonna say yes to that question. And recently, we've had a couple department heads retire. And our city manager, uh, let the council know that, uh, we've got an interim, uh, uh, department head there at that, at this point in time. And he's gonna try him for three to six months and see if they have the skill set to fulfill those positions. And I, I'm in favor of that. And if they've got the, what it takes and they're willing to do it and we have to trust the best judgment of our city manager to appoint department heads in those capacities. But I also think, you know, when we go to, um, we need a fresh perspective, uh, for qualified candidates, uh, um, that can fulfill the needs for our future, the way our city is growing also. And depending on the position, I might prefer that, uh, we look to go for the best qualified candidate and look, uh, using perhaps a third-party recruiter, uh, to help us achieve those goals. But, uh, a lot of times, I think we have the candidate actually in-house and they've worked together as a good team. And we'll find out if they're a good fit or not to fill those roles.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, this wraps up the questions, uh, for the city councilors, uh, candidates. Uh, and because Andrea, you started with opening remarks, um, Larry, I will have you start with, you have two minutes. Let's see. I'm sorry. Thank you. One-minute closing remarks.
I'm Larry Mack, New Ulm's Ward Four Counselor, and I'm running for Counselor-at-Large. Sorry, I'm on my wrong statement here.
I, I know the feeling.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of New Ulm for hosting tonight's debate. I'd also like to thank my campaign team and supporters for your ongoing encouragement. Voters, this election is about experience. I've been hands-on doing the work for six years on the city council, plus a dozen-plus years on local committees and commissions. I know what it takes to get results. Our current city council has the solid working relationships. And although we might disagree at times, we all want what's best for the community. I would be honored to lead the council through the next four years. I would like to build on the work we've done together so far and push the city to an even more vibrant future, fiscally responsible process, while supporting New Ulm's proud culture and traditions. I can't promise I'll make perfect decisions 100% of the time, but I can promise that I will continue to listen and make time for you 24/7, like I have these past six years. I will continue to learn and put the best interests of New Ulm first.
Thank you, Larry. Andrea?
Thank you. And I would like to, uh, to again, thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this important and informative event. And for the public that submitted some incredible questions. I think that that's phenomenal. My experience in business and finance and running nonprofits has positioned me well to step into the role of city council president. As a civically-minded individual and dedicated volunteer to our community, I am drawn to ways to make our community better. I understand the importance of budgeting, planning, and evaluating risk and can make smart decisions, even though they may not always be the easiest. As your city counselor-at-large, I would bring the same conservative approach when making decisions with your tax dollars and would stay abreast of our community challenges and opportunities for growth. I will listen to an open mind and I will solicit feedback from members of our community. Whether you're voting from home or at the polls on Election Day, I am asking for your vote. I am prepared to serve New Ulm as your next city council president and I'm looking forward to being a representative of the city of New Ulm.
Thank you. And again, thank you to Larry Mack and Andrea Betker for working through this tonight. Yeah. Some tough questions, all tough questions. Uh, this concludes our City Counselor-at-Large Candidate Forum this evening. We will start the forum for Minnesota House 16B in a few minutes.